Pass test.
Good evening, and welcome to this the February twenty seventh meeting of the Livermore City Council. I called the meeting to order. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Entos.
Here.
Councilmember Branning.
Here.
Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kick.
Here.
Mayor Marshawn.
Here. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We now have a presentation from the on the Library Board of Trustees. An update by Chair Richard Hunt. Mr. Hunt.
Seventy-five million words, or almost two million pages. Or to put it in the context, you might understand more, three thousand eight hundred city council agenda packets. That's remarkable to me. And I'll spend the next few minutes telling you more remarkable things about the library. I'm Rich Hunt. This is the annual report of the Library Board of Trustees. Change. Are we there? Over there. I'm looking at that one. So this is our board membership. Mini Chopra, Mariana Gazardo, and Art Pontau are board members. Vice Chair Laney Pascal. And me, Rich Hunt. Julie Le Bonk served on the board for the first half of two thousand twenty-two. Let's say a little bit about the board. We're an advisory board. We recommend policy. We help with strategic planning. We're sounding board for the staff. And suggest and endorse ideas to support strategic initiatives. It's those strategic goals that I have based this talk on, and so that's how we'll go through this talk. Next. First strategic goal was promote literacy. And the summer reading program was a large part of that. You've heard about that, so let's talk about the winter reading program. It was a new program this year. And twenty-seven hundred participants read two point four million minutes during that program, which was only half as long as the summer reading program. So fewer participants, much more reading per participant. It was a huge success. It'll be back. Next up was the Livermore Reads Together, an annual program. The book last year was The Reason I Jump, written by a thirteen-year-old person with autism. Programming around the Livermore Reads Together focused on neurodiversity. And there was an exhibit in the art gallery of poetry and artwork done by young people with autism. Next. The adult literacy program is going strong. There are fifty-eight adult learners currently in the program working with a volunteer one-on-one. And there are sixty-three active volunteers. There's also a English conversation groups, which is sort of a facilitated sit around the table and just practice your English. Second objective was affirm equality and inclusion. The wide variety of programs the library offered in two thousand twenty-two is an example of this. There was a Korean Cultural Festival, Mariachi San Francisco, Black History Month, Hindu Awareness Month. There were some STEM activities, a STEM short course, essentially, a four-week series on space sciences during the summer. The collections are also a way of affirming diversity. There's been a lot of work on non-English language materials, improving that collection. In fact, librarian Jackie Martinez won a reach reward, reach award for her efforts with Spanish language materials and Spanish language programs. The Library of Things is an awesome resource for non-traditional items, tools and equipment and games and robots and memory kits. You should take advantage of that if you haven't already. And lastly, the LinkedIn Learning, which I know as Lynda dot com, but it's now LinkedIn Learning, is a huge resource of training videos on technology and business and management and videography, photography, creative arts like that. The library noticed during the year that the branches weren't coming back from the pandemic as fast as the civic center, so they organized two outreach events at Springtown Library that had an open house and more than two hundred people attended. At the Rankin Library, they had a birthday party for its thirtieth birthday, and almost four hundred people attended. Excuse me. We've also updated the digital presence. There's a new improved webpage. There's Bibliocore, which is a discovery layer that sort of overlays the catalog and allows a Google-like searching and browsing of the collections and makes suggestions for things that you might not have found in the catalog. And then there's a smartphone app. You can click on the QR code there and download the smartphone app if you don't already have it. Outreach. So the library has gone out into the community. The pictured here is the Juneteenth celebration at the Bankhead Theater. They've also held storytimes at many of the community parks throughout the neighborhoods. And a growing partnership with L A R P D to give joint programs between the library and L A R P D Rangers. The Student One Card Program has allowed seventeen thousand of more students to use their school ID card as a library card, so they can access library resources, borrow books just with their ID without worrying about a library card. And lastly, we trucked people out to the Sycamore Grove field trips. We rented a bus and picked people up who had transportation difficulties at all three branches and took them out to Sycamore Grove and brought them back home again. Those buses were funded by the Friends of the Livermore Library. And we are truly indebted, both the board and the library, to the Friends. They, this year, in two thousand twenty-two, they funded seventy-seven thousand dollars worth of programs and services for the library. And since their inception, they funded more than a million dollars of library programs and services. I'm going to change steps here and look at a little bit of some figures. These are two thousand and two numbers through November two thousand twenty-two, and you'll see the impact the library has. Almost two hundred thousand visitors, more than a million searches, fifty thousand questions answered, all those new cards from the student IDs. So let's talk about growth and recovery after I have some water. So the library is pretty much back to normal. The hours are back to the regular hours that were pre-pandemic. All the computers been restored. The community rooms are back to being used by the community, as are the small study rooms. Staff is offering a variety of indoor-outdoor hybrid programming to meet the needs of everyone. People who don't want to meet in person are being offered hybrid programming. So let's look a little closer at a couple of the pandemic recoveries. These are a couple of bar charts. You can see the collection use. The has almost recovered back to what it was pre-pandemic. And this is five-year data for the calendar years, two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-two. Program use is coming back up, but still a little low. But if you do the math, you'll notice that per program, per attendance per program is actually higher in two thousand twenty-two than it was in two thousand nineteen. So what's coming up? So you have one more opportunity to participate in a Black History Month event. There's one tomorrow. It's on Zoom. The link's there. You can check it out tomorrow evening. Livermore Reads comes up in March. The book chosen this year is chosen this year by the community, voting in person and online, is Radium Girls. It's the sad but somewhat triumphant story of radium dial painters, women who painted radium on watch dials and other instruments and suffered tremendous physical damage from their job. But in their struggle to be compensated for that, OSHA was founded, and occupational health and safety laws came into being. Excuse me. One more time. So I'm going to sum up by our goals for the coming year. So access. We're going to help the library discover new ways to provide equitable access to all that it provides. We're also going to help the library get out into the community and engage people where they gather. We're going to support the library's literacy and learning efforts for all members of the community. We're to continue to provide the library with ideas to enhance and broaden the reach of its major annual events. And we're going to provide the library with ideas to strengthen policies. Centership is our first concern. There's a lot of, lot of news about people wanting to remove books from public and school libraries. So we want to make sure that our library is in a good position there. That's all I have. Thank you. I'll take questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much. You may know that I started my career at the Hayward Library, which is also a Carnegie library. Any questions? Great. Yes. Customer.
I wanted to make just a quick comment that I just really appreciate you. I think we have a library system that I've said for years, we could go toe-to-toe with cities that have ten times our population, and our library system looks good in comparison. The events you put on, the collection you manage, the library of things, everything you do. You guys just do an amazing job. And for many citizens, you're really one of the only regular ways they interface with the Livermore government. And you do a great job of making us look good. So I want to thank you very deeply for all you do, for the staff, for the commission, for everyone's work on this. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All second slash third slash fourth that kids and I went to the library just the other day, and we got some seeds, which is another thing that's at the library. There's a seeds library. And I did learn that there was tools. I thought the library's things were just things like games, but excited to borrow some tools from my garden. And you're the favorite place of my children, so thank you for that. And I'm excited about Radium Girls. I have my book on hold, which is really interesting because it's in March. And this year, Women's History Month, the theme is Women Who Tell Our Stories. And it's a woman who tells stories. It's about women and how they changed the world and created OSHA. So very cool tie-in. Just thought you'd be interested to know. Thank you for everything.
Welcome. That wonderful library of things. That's very interesting.
I just picked up some information today from that guy in the center that we have three libraries. Double has none. City libraries and President has one. So we, you know, we're in the game. So I was a kindergarten teacher, and I really enjoyed reading books. It was my excuse to read the little kid books that I ordered every week. And I know kids when they start hearing stories. One thing I did in the middle school, I'm not sure which book I got, Harry Potter or one of those, that I went to the fifth chapter and read the chapter in my class. And then I shut the book and the kids go, what's next? There's books in the library. The librarian went crazy. He goes, all these kids are in the library asking for these books. But yeah, it's a really way, I was not a reader in school. I don't think I read one book in high school. That was it. I was forced to read it. But now I'm an avid reader, so yeah, books are great in there. Kids enjoy them.
They open up whole new words for you. Great. Whole new worlds. Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Okay, with that, we're going to go to the Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for folks to speak to the city council on something not on the agenda. I'll ask the city clerk to inform the public on how they can participate.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. For agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has a discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comment when a city council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate in person or remotely, as noticed on the agenda. To provide comment in person, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the council chamber. Speakers will be announced in the order received. We will hear from members of the public who are in person first, followed by those wishing to speak over Zoom. To provide comment by Zoom, please use the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand at the beginning of each item. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes will begin once at the lectern or upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. We typically accept one half hour of public comment. And with that, do we have anybody that wishes to speak?
Yes, we do, Mayor. The first speaker is Mel Chong, followed by Abhilash Raman.
Mayor Marshawn, the city council, city manager, city staff, good evening. I'm here tonight to address the issue on mail theft, M A I L theft. Reason being, a few days ago, about last week, there was a thread on Nextdoor Forum, which in fact, I was called out by name. To get this concern out, the author of the post posted two videos, actually. One video of a sedan on their street, stopping at mailboxes, and another video of a U-Haul truck stopping at their same street. And we know that this was not, either one of those were not mail delivery, because one was right after midnight and one was after six o'clock. And so whether it's a community mailbox that's being broken into or a single home locked mailbox being broken into, I think it's a some of the things that are taken out of the mailboxes have devastating consequences on individuals, especially when it comes to identity theft. I don't bring any solution, because I think this is a broad topic to handle, but between maybe LPD, the post office. And in line with, I was thinking, I thought of coming here because in line with that, I was thinking the issue on catalytic converter had the community sort of come about with the Las Positas College and the LPD having some kind of a layer with the etching event. And so hopefully with the mail theft that I think and other people think that are becoming more frequent, I hope that something can be done about it, and we can all feel safe with our mail. Thank you.
Thank you. With respect to the catalytic converters of the March second, there's going to be an etch and catch event at Las Positas College from eight to four, building eight hundred, so you can have your catalytic converters etched at no charge, so that if it is recovered, they can get it back to you. With the mail theft, one of the things on that Nextdoor thread that you mentioned was that the boxes were not broken into, so it seems that someone may have actually a master key. So that's something that we need to speak to the postmaster general, or the actually the Livermore postmaster about. So we can continue to work on that. Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Abhilash Raman, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and city staff. My name is Abhilash Raman, and I volunteer for a nonprofit organization called Conscious Planet. And today I'm here to talk about our soil. In two thousand twenty, the U N estimated that we have roughly sixty years of agriculture left on this planet. Over fifty-two percent of the soil in the U S has completely deteriorated. The reason why we should take note of this is because an overwhelming eighty-seven percent of all living species, including human beings, are completely dependent on this soil. If we continue to maintain the status quo and do nothing about this, by two thousand fifty, we will be producing forty percent lesser food, while our global population is estimated to grow from eight to nine point three billion people. This is not just about the quantity, it's also about the quality. Over the last hundred years, the average mineral content of calcium, magnesium, and iron in produce such as cabbage, lettuce, spinach, tomatoes, etc., has dropped by eighty to ninety percent. And this is quite clear in the rising number of cases of nutrition and vitamin deficiency compromising our immunity and impacting our overall well-being. Soil degradation today is costing U S roughly forty-five to fifty billion dollars annually, and that number is over ten trillion dollars globally. The good news is that the soil crisis is reversible, provided we all act with a sense of urgency to increase the organic content in the top ten to fifteen inches of the soil to a minimum of three to six percent. Soil as a solution caters to twelve out of the seventeen global sustainability development goals set up by the U N. Healthy soil can further help us reduce greenhouse gas emissions by thirty to thirty-five percent. It can also help us conserve water used in agriculture by an estimated forty percent and also improve crop yield by an estimated twenty to forty percent. All of these very applicable to the state of California. Livermore has a rich history and heritage. We have over five thousand acres of vineyards over here, producing some of the world's best wines. As a community, we enjoy the farmers' market year-round, and I would like the future generations to continue to enjoy these. Over thirty-five mayors from different cities in the U S have already joined the global movement to proclaim March twenty-first as Save Soil Day in order to spread awareness. I am here to humbly request you, Mayor Marchand, as well as the rest of your leadership team, to kindly support this proclamation and lend your voice and platforms available to spread awareness to save our soil. Thank you.
Thanks, Raman. Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
When is our compost giveaway system? Are we doing that again this year?
Vice Mayor, it's April twenty-second, Earth Day.
April twenty-second? Yeah, so go get your compost and put it in the soil, because then it's going to increase the percentage of organic matter. I'm very excited for that day.
Two free bags.
Yes.
No other speakers?
No additional speakers.
Great, thank you. I'll close the public comment period. And moving on to the consent calendar, these are considered routine in nature and are acted upon usually with a single action. Members of the audience wishing to provide public comment should submit a speaker card and raise the hand feature in Zoom. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak on the consent calendar?
Yes, we do, Mayor. We have one speaker over Zoom, Trish Monroe.
Good evening. I'll make this brief. I looked at the consent calendar, and it's generally my favorite part of the calendar. It just represents all the work that the city staff has done at the direction, of course, of city council. And I noticed that there are sidewalks, there's biohazard cleanup, there's electric chargers, there's the finances, there's a general plan. It's an enormous amount of work, and I just wanted to say thank you. And now I know you want to get on, so that's it for me. Thanks.
Well, thank you. Former councilmember Monroe. Does anybody else wish to speak?
No additional speakers.
I'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the council.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, Mayor. We do have one more hand.
Oh, okay.
Carl Wenty over Zoom.
Hi, this is Carl Wenty. I live on Tesla Road, and I just want to double down on what ex-council member Monroe just said and give profound, profound thanks and appreciation to the volume of work that goes into having our government function. So thank you, city staff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to all the city council members. Thank you to those who put on a bulletproof vest to go to work, keep us safe. Thank you, those who wear a badge and that fight fires, that take care of the elderly, take care of the destitute. As Dalai Lama said, we judge a society based on how you best look after the most destitute in that society. So all those that lean in, just want to extend that profound appreciation. Again, the volume of work that goes into consent calendar. Councilman, ex-councilmember Monroe, I'm a little weird like you, I believe, in that that's my favorite part of just how the sausage is made and the volume of work that goes into our functioning government. And then I know this is not on it, but I want to last speaker said five thousand acres of grapes, and we're at twenty-three hundred and going downhill from there. So off topic, I apologize, Mr. Alcala. Thank you all so much, including you, Mr. Alcala.
All right.
There are no additional speakers.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wenty. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the comment period and bring it back to the council. Does anybody wish to pull any of the items for for comment or questions, or do we just have a few simple questions and we can address it later? Councilmember Branning.
I just have some comments on one of the items. I don't think I need to pull it. Is that okay?
Sure.
So I'd like to make some comments on item five point three. So if I didn't, five point three, for anyone listening without the agenda in front of them, is about the contract for repaving. The contract itself works for me, so I didn't want to pull it for that reason. However, I'm a little concerned on how we got to this point, and I'd like to kind of examine going forward as we're doing repave. The repave plan is a really important part of how our city manages the active transportation plan, how we manage connectivity, basically how we manage mobility in our city. And so when we're doing repaves, I think it's very important that the active transportation plan and our mobility studies align with our actual repave plan. One of the issues that came up in this one, in this specific repave contract, is that as we repave Marietta Boulevard, there will not be a protected bike lane, which is outlined in the active transportation plan. I understand the reasons why that will not be happening during this repave, and I'm not here to complain about that part. But I do want to make sure that as we move along, we are making sure that the active transportation plan aligns with the realities of our roads. And so either a future study to make sure that, you know, where we cannot build a protected bike lane, that we are making sure that we have, we update the active transportation plan to reflect that. And as well, when we are doing the repaves, a little further in advance, giving notice so that some of our community who are really invested, such as the VPAC and ATC, are able to really look at the plans and make sure not to change which streets we're repaving, as I know that's fairly formulaic, but really how we are repaving them and making sure that we do have the right resources and the right processes involved. So just having a little extra time for that public comment section and making sure that our advocates are really able to influence that process. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else comments on the consent calendar?
I just liked the second, what councilmember Branning said.
Oh, okay. It wasn't a formal motion, but you agree.
Well, I was going to say it all again, but I'll just say what Branning said.
What he said. Okay, very good. With the five point five question that I had, in Exhibit C, it states that the operational availability of the chargers for the East Bay Community Energy, and this is for EV chargers in the downtown and actually throughout our community. It says it'll be ninety-seven percent. That's a remarkable standard. What happens if they can't meet that standard?
Mr. Mayor, this is Paul Spence, your community development director. So that is the standard that E B C has identified and has agreed to meet. If they don't meet that standard, then we do have the option over time. If they don't meet that standard, then we do have the option over time to, to seek a different vendor. Uh, and, uh, we will be monitoring their adherence to their, uh, their identified goals, so.
Okay, and on five point seven, uh, we had contracted with a company to manage, uh, one of our affordable units. Uh, and, uh, we found out later that there were some problems with that unit and it's been fairly expensive to, uh, to rehab that. Uh, are there going to be, uh, in, granted, we just came through a global pandemic. So I understand that th- this is a different world right now. Uh, are there provisions in place, uh, for more frequent, uh, inspections and visits for, for these types of units? So it doesn't get to the point where, uh, it's more problematic and expensive.
Yes, so we, we have, uh, actually switched contractors and so we have a new contractor, H C E B, and they will be making more frequent visits.
Okay, very good. Thank you. There's no further questions. Who have a motion for the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Vice Mayor Kick. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Antos.
Aye.
Councilmember Branning.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kick.
Aye.
Mayor Marshon.
Aye. Okay, and this is, uh, uh, moving on to the, uh, public hearings. This is, uh, six point one, this is a hearing to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance considering amendments to Livermore Development Code uh, regarding heavy industrial zoning districts.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, this is your city manager, Mariana Madravova. Your first public hearing this evening, item six point one, is going to be presented by Susan Frost, Special Projects Coordinator in the Community Development Department. Ms. Frost, whenever you're ready. We're almost done with the presentation upload, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for your patience.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, city council members. I'm Susan Frost, Special Projects Coordinator with the Planning Division. Excuse me just a moment, please. Within the last two years, um, a rather large warehouse was purchased by a large e-commerce business and converted into a delivery station. While it was a permitted use in the I three zoning district, it does raise concerns regarding the expansion of these type of e-commerce warehouses in the city. Traditional warehouses and distribution facilities are generally associated with more specific manufacturing uses. By contrast, e-commerce facilities function much, much differently. E-commerce, um, warehouse and distribution businesses are generally include three different types of facilities. The first one is a distribution facility, also, um, referred to as a fulfillment center. Um, this is where goods are received and stored and then repackaged for eventually, um, eventual delivery to the customer. They are then sent to what are called sortation centers, um, at a regional level. Um, and then again sorted and delivered to delivery stations, um, which then, is where they are delivered to the customers. This is considered the last leg of the delivery network. A fulfillment center can be rather large, one to two million square feet. And the e-commerce facility that we have on Longfellow Court is a delivery station, and that's six hundred and ten thousand square feet on thirty-four acres. The proposal to, uh, is to amend the definition of, uh, warehouse and distribution facilities to distinguish between more traditional warehouse facilities and e-commerce facilities due to the differences between them. Um, e-commerce facilities, um, would be permitted in the I three, um, heavy industrial zoning district through a conditional use permit. The majority of these, of the I three zoning is located on the, um, east side of the city, and that would be west of Greenville Road, along both sides of Vasco Road, north of Patterson Pass. Um, on the map, it's the dark purple areas that are outlined in white. Um, while e-commerce facilities do provide some employment and support e-commerce in the community, they do require rather large parcels and are large facilities. Other communities in the Bay Area and in California and also nationwide are dealing with this type of uh, development of this new form of industrial use by implementing similar, um, development standards. Um, for example, Hayward also requires a conditional use permit for large-scale warehouse and distribution facilities. E-commerce facilities by their very nature raise a number of concerns as there is a limited supply of developable industrial lands within the city. Um, these concerns include such things as job density, that is, a relatively low number of jobs per square footage, um, in these buildings, um, concerns with jobs housing match and also with public revenue. A concentration of e-commerce facilities in one location could displace development of other types of job generated uses and could have adverse noise and traffic impacts. A conditional use permit process allows us to, um, allows for, um, additional consideration of these potential impacts such as traffic, noise, and jobs. Um, the planning commission at its meeting of October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, considered the project. There was no public testimony at, at the, at the hearing. The, the planning commission did note, um, concerns related to the availability of land, industrial land inventory and potential environmental effects. The planning commission and staff recommend the city council adopt a resolution that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and, um, to approve, uh, the Development Code Amendment, um, twenty-two dash zero zero two. That concludes my presentation.
No public comment has been received, Mayor.
The case being there's no public comment, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. Uh, council, uh, Councilmember Carling.
Thank you very much for that presentation. It is my understanding that there are no applications at the moment to use this kind of, uh, warehouse. At, is that true?
That's correct.
Yeah, because I didn't want to implement a change here in the midst of somebody applying for the way the code is currently written. And so thank you for that. Um, there's also been some concern that we did get a letter that would add a layer of bureaucracy. Can you speak to that if you wouldn't mind?
Sure. The planning commission did get a letter from the Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce express, expressing concern with anything that could be perceived as a, a constraint on developing these types of facilities. Uh, our staff did meet with, uh, the chamber executive director and explained that the intent of this is, is really to make sure that the use is compatible, uh, that the, uh, impacts that Ms. Frost mentioned, for example, on traffic, noise, any sort of roadway improvements or impacts that might be, uh, occurring from heavy use of a ti- particular type of vehicle could be addressed in a real specific fashion and tailored into conditions that might make that use, uh, appropriate for the site. Um, so after we, uh, kind of talked about the intent, uh, was to more help it fit if it was an appropriate use, uh, the, um, director did seem to think it was an appropriate use of, uh, the city's permitting system and wouldn't, um, detour, other types of warehousing uses from at least seeking to locate in the city.
So how much time do you think it would adds to, um, getting an approval to C U P?
Typical time for a conditional use permit is about two to four months, depending on uh, how, how quickly the applicant side of the house can work.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor Kick.
Uh, from my understanding, uh, when it's a conditional use permit, we can ask them to address some of the impacts that are created. Um, for example, if it's a traffic impact, we can ask them to place a driveway in a certain direction. Um, but we are not able, it's not a, it's not a way for us to just add an unnecessary step to deter people. It's simply to mitigate the impacts that we have found due to a traffic study that we can do based on their conditional use permit.
That's correct. So in other words, the, the conditions that might apply to a project have to, um, be proportional to the potential impact. So there has to be a connection to that. And through detailed studies like a traffic analysis, we can, um, our transportation engineering section can look at that and, and see what might be appropriate conditions to make sure that use is compatible and doesn't impact city infrastructure over the long term.
Thank you.
You know, the questions, concerns, um, have you willing to entertain a motion?
I'll move, uh, staff recommendations.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Branning.
A second.
Uh, seconded by, uh, Vice Mayor Kick. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Antos.
Aye.
Councilmember Branning.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kick.
Aye.
Mayor Warner, sorry. Mayor Marshon.
Aye. Okay, um, with that, six point two, hearing to waive the first reading and introduce ordinance considering amendments to Livermore Development Code, uh, they home, regarding home occupations.
Mayor Marshon, members of the city council, this is your city manager again, Mariana Madravova. Item six point two is once again going to be presented by Susan Frost with the assistance from Steve Stewart. Ms. Frost. Thank you for your patience, Mayor and City Council. We're uploading the presentation.
There we go.
Thank you, uh, Mayor and council members. In in the fall of twenty twenty-one, um, the Development Code was amended to allow up to three clients and one employee for home occupations. Previously, clients were limited to, um, just to tutoring types of, of businesses, but we now do allow three clients, uh, for home occupations. A significant number of home occupations, um, do not have clients or employees at the home, uh, and do not have discernible presence in the neighborhood. As such, staff is recommending that such home occupations be exempt from attaining, obtaining a home occupation permit. Exempt home occupations would still be subject to other compatibility standards in our Development Code. The planning commission held a, a public hearing on this project at its October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting, and there was no public testimony. The planning commission unanimously supported the staff recommendations and, um, recommended that the council adopt a resolution that the project is categorically exempt under CEQA and to approve the Development Code Amendment twenty-two dash zero one. And that concludes the presentation and available for questions.
Very good. Thank you. Um, see, I'll open the public comment period. Do we have any, uh, public comment?
There are no speakers, Mayor.
Okay, in that case, I'll close the public comment, uh, bring it back to the council, uh, Councilmember Branning.
Yeah, so unsurprisingly, I agree with myself from a few months ago. But, uh, just a couple of things that I think are really nice about this. This is a oversight when we updated the, uh, home occupancy businesses code that we did not think of, and this is really the embodiment of good governance. We found an error that we made. We are fixing the error that we made. And for me, this is just absolutely a logical thing. I've been a big fan. And if you go back to the notes, I had a lot of comments on the original home occupancy rules. Uh, and I think Livermore is doing a really good job with them and exempting businesses that have no impact on the neighbors makes perfect sense. And just, uh, to make sure it's clear for everyone, the code does still include things. So some of the concerns that came up in our meeting were things like, if there was a business that had no clients visiting, no employees, but had an excessive number of deliveries, that would fall outside of the acceptable use. So if it was disruptive to the neighborhood, even if it didn't meet the definition of no employees and, uh, no clients, it still would need to get a license or would need, uh, further code enforcement if it was causing neighborhood issues. So, uh, I think this is great. Thank you.
Well, I think this is one of the important things that we also, with the pandemic, is that people needed to pivot. People needed to reinvent themselves. And the fact that the city is able to cooperate and to help people create these businesses that have very little impact, but they do allow people to continue to, to live in their homes and to continue to sustain themselves. So, um, great work. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Branning, would you like to make the motion? You're on both sides of it.
Love to make the motion. So, motion to approve, uh, staff's recommendation.
A second.
Okay, uh, motion been made by Councilmember Branning, seconded by Councilmember Carling. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Antos.
Aye.
Councilmember Branning.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kick.
Aye.
Mayor Marshon.
Aye. Uh, moving on to matters for consideration, this is a discussion in direction regarding, uh, sending a one-year extension notification letter to, uh, Republic Services Vasco Landfill.
Mayor Marshon, members of the city council, this is your city manager, Mariana Madravova. Your first and only discussion item this evening, seven point one, is going to be presented by Judy Erlinson with the Public Works Department. And again, please bear with us as we look for the presentation and upload it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Marshon and members of the city council. My name is Judy Erlinson and I'm the city's acting assistant public works director. This item considers options to either negotiate a long-term contract with the current service provider, Republic Services Vasco Road Landfill, or issue a request for proposals or R F P for disposal services. To allow time for this process, staff is recommending that the required one hundred eighty-day notification be sent to the current service provider to request a one-year extension to the current disposal agreement. So some background information, the city of Livermore has disposed of solid waste at the Vasco Road landfill since the nineteen sixties. The most recent disposal agreement was approved in two thousand and two and expires at the end of this calendar year. Livermore Sanitation currently collects and transports solid waste to Republic Services Vasco Road landfill per the terms of their franchise agreement, which, which expires in twenty thirty. The graphic that you see here shows the destination of materials collected by Livermore Sanitation, including Livermore's solid waste disposed of at the Vasco Road landfill. The black triangles indicate landfills, and you can see Waste Management's Altamont landfill is located slightly further east compared to the Vasco Road landfill. Since the term of the current disposal agreement ends in December twenty twenty-three, staff is recommending that the city provide one hundred eighty days' notice to the Vasco Road landfill to extend the current disposal agreement by one year to allow time for either a longer-term contract negotiations or the R F P process. This one-year extension would include a four point five percent increase on the base per ton rate of twenty dollars and twenty-four cents per ton. The city council has two options. The City Council has two options for a long-term disposal agreement. Either direct staff to negotiate solely with Republic Services for a long-term disposal agreement at the Vasco Road Landfill, or direct staff to release a request for proposals for landfill disposal services. If directed to pursue sole source negotiations for a disposal agreement with the Vasco Road Landfill, it is expected that Livermore would continue to have the lowest price per ton for municipal solid waste disposal among all of the other jurisdictions served by the Vasco Road Landfill. Republic Services is also committed to expand their construction and demolition sorting operation to increase the recovery of materials. The site of the Vasco Road Landfill could also be a possible disaster debris staging location if the city of Livermore were to need to uh, need debris storage after a severe event. Going forward, Vasco Road Landfill staff have asked that their rates be adjusted using a CPI increase annually instead of a predefined rate at the start of the term of the contract. Vasco Road Landfill staff have also requested language related to consideration for special compensation for unanticipated events and spikes in fuel costs. Alternatively, the City Council could direct staff to release an RFP for disposal services. An RFP process would likely require the services of a consultant at an estimated cost of seventy-five thousand dollars. It may take about a year to complete an RFP process. To nearby landfills, the Vasco Road Landfill and Waste Management's Altamont Landfill would likely submit a competitive proposal for disposal services. Other landfills may also be interested in responding to an RFP. Other landfills could potentially accommodate the city's municipal solid waste stream, but would likely be comparatively more expensive due to the cost of transferring the solid waste into larger trucks for transportation longer distances. Other impacts of transferring waste to out-of-county landfills would be increased emissions, traffic congestion, and additional fees. If the Livermore sanitation facility on National Drive were to be used to transfer waste from small trucks to larger trucks, ratepayer-funded investments in infrastructure and equipment would be necessary, and current permits would need to be modified, which could take years to finalize. And impacts to the area around the facility, such as odors, litter, additional truck traffic, would all likely increase. So staff is recommending that the City Council direct staff to send a one-year extension notification letter to the Vasco Road Landfill and include a CPI rate increase and negotiate with Republic Services for a longer-term disposal agreement. Thank you for your consideration, and staff is available for questions.
Do you have any public comment?
Mayor, no comment has been received.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to, uh, close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. Uh, questions from the council? Vice Mayor.
Uh, so I think this is a really good example of how our policies should align. We have a very strong climate action plan, and so to consider what the climate effects are of trucking garbage farther away. I was, I knew we had a landfill here, but when I got the report, I was really surprised to see how far the others are for the entire Bay Area. So how much garbage and how much emissions are being used just to move trash from place to place? I understand that there is generally a an equity issue where we want it to be fair that everyone can have, um, an opportunity. However, to maintain our climate goals and, um, to to maintain the best rate that we've been promised, my personal thought is that we should do that one-year extension and continue, um, with Republic Services. It just honestly seems silly to drive our trash farther away.
Like some cities running it up to Yuba City, for example? Does we bring it to us any, uh? Okay. Uh, customer Carling.
Yeah, thanks, Judy, for that very much. I think, um, we did get a letter from Altamont. Uh, and I guess my conclusion from that, that wasn't very persuasive, uh, to me. So I agree with the, uh, point made by the Vice Mayor about the one-year extension. The one question I do have, though, is I guess, why wouldn't we go out for an RFP a year from now?
That could be an option if negotiations were in pass. So we still have that on the table if we cannot reach a good solution with Republic Services.
Okay, so that doesn't presuppose if we were to, uh, take staff recommendations and agree to that this evening, that doesn't, um, obviate the, uh, RFP a year from now.
That that option would still be available to us, yes.
All right, very good. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, uh, with that, uh, thank you for the presentation. Very good. Is I'd be willing to entertain a motion?
I'll move staff recommendation.
Uh, motion by council member Carling.
Can I clarify? That's recommendation number one, which is the one-year extension and to begin negotiations. Okay, yes, then then I would second staff recommendation number one.
Right, that's that's the, uh, one on the right now. Okay, uh, but you're you're thinking about this slide is two, but this is actually the recommendation is that directing the staff to the one-year right, okay. Uh, all right, when you, uh, negotiation. Okay, uh, motion by council member Carling, seconded by Vice Mayor Kik. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bariantos.
Hi.
Councilmember Branning.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor K.
Hi.
Mayor Marshon.
Hi. Thank you very much. Okay, on to, uh, committee reports, matters initiated. This was a busy week. Let me tell you, actually busy, busy two weeks. We have the, uh, the report out, uh. See, council member, uh, Branning.
Thank you. Uh, so you have my report out, but I want to just highlight a couple of things really quickly. One of the coolest things that, uh, myself and Mayor Marshon got to go to this week is the opening of Open Heart Kitchen's new, uh, you'll correct me on the name, but the food distribution hub, basically their uh, new warehouse where they'll be able to collect large quantities of food and distribute them to local service providers. Uh, this gives us a lot more access to, uh, food storage and will help with the food insecurity issues we have locally as well as regionally. Uh, so that was one of the highlights of my week, uh, week to be able to see that now getting up and running. Uh, the only other things just to highlight is we did have a really robust conversation, uh, laptop about the shared autonomous vehicle program. It is being piloted in Dublin. If people are interested in that, I would pay attention to upcoming laptop meetings. Uh, and for LDI, uh, there's a lot of great events coming up, so keep an eye out for those as well. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Carling.
Thank you. I, my report is in the documents today, but I just wanted to add that the mayor and I had the opportunity of visiting Monarch Tractor today, and it's, uh, it is really quite amazing. These are tractors, electric tractors, yeah, that are used primarily right now for the, uh, for wineries, but I think they're certainly considering expanding into other agricultural areas, but it, uh, I think just a few years ago, they opened their business with about fifteen employees, and they have somewhere upwards of two hundred and fifty employees now, and they are hard at work, and it's really a remarkable success story. And I think, um, with respect to the conversation about big warehouses employing just a few people to move, you know, material from here to there, I think, uh, a business like Monarch Tractor is really what our, uh, Economic and Innovation Development Department is really after the, where you can get high-paying, really, uh, high-tech jobs here in this community where the people will live and work and bring another quality of life to this, uh, Livermore community. So it was a great opportunity to visit, uh, Monarch, and if you have an opportunity, I certainly recommend it. Thank you.
That was a great, uh, great tour. Councilmember Brilliantos.
Oh. Yeah, I submitted my report. I finally figured out some of my report, which I did. And I, oh, this is a new opening of a restaurant, which you were there too. Uh, St. John's Soul Food, and I was talking to the people, why are you here? And they said, there's nowhere else to go except you unless you go to Oakland for soul food. And I did try some of the, their potatoes are great. They're, yeah. But anyway, you should go visit it on, uh, other side of the freeway. They have two new restaurants here. One is a Latino restaurant, Mexican food, Califia. And, uh, I don't think they made a big thing with it, but they did have their grand opening too. It took over the old Starbucks here. So there's two new restaurants here.
Vice Mayor.
I actually didn't forget to my submit my thing. I just had nothing happening. So, um, I, I went to the library and baseball practices. Uh, but other than that, it was a quiet week, so, um, doesn't stay quiet. So I'll get back to y'all later with anything exciting coming up.
Okay, um, well, we went to the Employee Service Awards, and that was, that was remarkable because it gives us an opportunity to celebrate the people that really make it all happen. I mean, we sit up here and we get to take credit for the work that everybody else does. Uh, and we recognized, uh, seventy-one employees who had served this community for over a thousand years. Uh, and this is the reason this is the remarkable community that it is, is we've got great people that are working to keep it that way. So certainly appreciate all of their efforts. Uh, again, they, we've got some new, uh, great restaurants are coming in here, uh, Taco on Todos. Uh, uh, I was at that, uh, grand opening and had the opportunity to meet the grandson of Pancho Villa, uh, which is kind of cool, the fun stuff. I mean, he, uh, grew up in Russell City, which no longer exists. Uh, that's a, a western suburb of Hayward where I grew up, and I remember, uh, it's, uh, known for its jazz many years ago. So, uh, that was fun. The, uh, uh, another ribbon cutting at, uh, St. John's, I was there as well. Uh, fabulous ribs, uh, fabulous brisket, uh, so make it out there. The, uh, Monarch Tractor. Uh, so four years ago, uh, they started this, uh, uh, in India, and they showed the first model that they had there, uh, with sort of a welded steel frame, uh, and a plywood roof. Uh, and now they've got the state-of-the-art, um, camera system which drives this thing. It's, uh, accurate within two centimeters, uh, with this camera, uh, binocular, uh, vision, as it were. So it's very cool technology. Again, four years from their original prototype to manufacturing right here in Livermore, and I echo uh, council member Carling's, uh, comments that, uh, we're required to put in or to to plan for forty-five hundred new housing units, uh, through Rena. Uh, but we also, in order to keep that jobs housing balance, we want to be able to use the limited inventory that we have of this large, uh, industrial manufacturing areas uh, for organizations and companies just like, uh, Monarch Tractors. It's very exciting, uh, to have them here. Uh, one of the founders, by the way, is a gentleman by the name of Carlo Mondavi. Uh, and those of us that have been in the wine industry for a while certainly know the Mondavi name is legendary, uh, in the wine industry. So, um, very happy to have them here in Livermore. Uh, again, I guess that's, uh, also I was, uh, tonight was at a, uh, a meet and greet with, uh, Cal State University Bakersfield, uh, President, uh, Zalesny. And, uh, this is very exciting because Livermore really is leading the charge on, uh, carbon sequestration. Uh, and they're looking at, uh, sequestering carbon underground because they've been pulling a lot of oil out of Bakersfield. Uh, there is the opportunity to carbon capture and sequester it underground. So really cutting-edge science that's being done right here, uh, in Livermore, uh, and throughout the state of California. So, uh, certainly appreciate all of that. Uh, with that, um, let's see, there being no further business, uh, coming before the council. Uh, I will adjourn this to the, uh, special council meeting on Thursday, March second, uh, and then also a regular council meeting on March thirteenth, uh, and a special council meeting on March sixth. So busy, busy times, uh, but we're getting a lot of stuff done. So with that, thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.